The property owned all the way down to the bulkhead, that's my, that's the problem that I'm having.
Well, somebody's gonna build a road, right, to get access to it.
Not there.
Building the access from man?
They're building the access on top.
Are you sure?
It's a question, we, nobody knows.
I don't think so, I don't think they're gonna do it that way.
That's what I was told. But, nobody knows the real answer, because it says basically-
Because Cornwall Land doesn't really go that far, to Cornwall.
Because it says here, it says-
I hear you.
leads to this stuff.
There's, it's in contract, wait.
I live in Cornwall.
Tim Contra.
The plan, the plan isn't, the plan, the land is in contract right now. A condition of sale will be to get a permit from the village to build a new house. And that would include to fix the wall.
Right.
So, I'm thinking that the owner is responsible for it, if that's what it's saying.
And who is the owner? Mark.
Mark.
Well, okay, so Mark is responsible for fixing the wall.
Could that be a code violation if he owns something that's falling apart and is dangerous?
Sure would be.
I would say so.
So why don't we have him put a code out, you know, put a, whatever you put out.
OTR.
Uh, OTR.
An OTR, oh then.
So we have to tell-
I mean, this is like two years at least, you live on a block.
Well, because originally he had sold it.
I know.
And I don't know if it fell through, so we were waiting to, because they had-
But we should have Mark fix the wall.
That was 2013, Rita.
Yes, but unfortunately, I was never told that Mark still owned it, I thought the new people had owned it.
Well, even so, then they would have to do it.
Right.
Somebody has to do it, somebody's responsible.
And then when we contacted the people, the new people who owned it, they said they weren't responsible for it, and that's when we were looking up who was responsible.
Yeah, and?
And then they said the people that lived on either side also had something to do with it.
Who's they, who's they telling you this?
The village.
Oh, okay.
It was Mike at the time.
Oh, okay.
Mike was researching this.
Was he?
Unfortunately, yes, unfortunately, I think, I think we called him, he would remember this property, because he was doing all the research on it.
So why don't we call him?
Okay, I'm not that friendly with him, I only know him through the village, so if you wanna call him personally-
Mike, yeah, I'll call.
You want us to do that?
I'll call.
See, you want us to take care of-
But if, like you said, if, if it is owned by, if it is owned by Mark, then we should give an OTR.
It is owned by Mark.
I think he's responsible for it.
Yes, he, it's his responsibility.
Because really, this, this paperwork still doesn't clarify to me exactly.
All right, you know what, I'll also look into proving that he owns it.
It doesn't state it.
Well, who pays the taxes, real simple?
Well, now that's my problem here, but no, because if you notice, I have other people on-
What lot and po- what do they pay taxes for? I have the lots and plot numbers. Do you, do you, Henry, can you give me back that lot and plot number, so I have them?
Which one, this one?
No. I found, look, Rita. These are lots and plots.
Well, who's gonna pay charges?
So it's lot thirty-one. Thirty-two and thirty-three.
I don't know if it goes by, does it give you the number here?
Okay, so-
Does it give you the number? Here, here, here it is, it's up here. Lot four, lot twenty-se- well, lot twenty-seven, lot twenty-two, twenty-five, what's that one say?
Okay, but see, yeah, and this is-
Give me, give me that one that you have that shows the lots.
Thirty-one, thirty-two and thirty-three.
So Mark owns lots thirty-one and thirty-three, and Kerry Keane owns thirty-four and thirty-five. So thirty-four and thirty-five, the problem is, this men- this shows the, the lot lines, but it doesn't show what the lot numbers.
Well, thirty-four and thirty-five are closer to the wall.
Thirty-four and thirty-five-
Thirty-one and thirty-two are right at the top.
Why don't we do, why don't we do a little more research on it?
Let me just show you.
Maybe, I'll call Mark.
Okay.
Call Mark, talk to Mike.
I did speak to Mark.
Thirty-one, thirty-two and thirty-three.
And ask if he's responsible. I don't know why I have this-
Did you ask him if he felt responsible for that wall?
I'm gonna have him-
Thirty-four and thirty-two.
How many do you need?
Twenty-two and twenty-five.
Thirty-one and thirty-two are Mark's.
That's not Mark's side.
Thirty-one and thirty-two are Mark's.
Mark's forty years.
Vacant lots.
Yeah, they're all vacant.
What did Mark say about it?
Thirty-three and thirty-four are, are the territory.
No, I understand, Mark owns that property.
So maybe, because look.
He owns a portion, I'll get in touch with him. And he owns a portion here, look.
What you're saying, let's forget how big it is. Thirty-two and thirty-three, and then it's, yeah, here.
I think there's more.
This is probably already, that's why he's, so he owns it, and he's the one that has to have the code.
I think there's three.
There is nothing on there.
Where do you get the-
The two homeowners on either side, there's the village, and then there's the property owner, it's a matter of figuring out who's-
If, if somebody's gonna build access to that house, that's the, that's where we're gonna have to be spending.
Right.
Which means the retainers are gonna come in.
Come down again, correct.
So whoever's extending it has gotta-
Yeah, but how long are you gonna take, my question is, how long are you gonna keep it, that, you know, safety, I mean, it's a problem.
And I know, I know band-aiding is not the solution.
Who built the wall?
That's a good question.
The village, maybe the village.
I don't know.
Right, so it might be the village's problem.
That's a good question.
I don't think it is, because he, they upset the wall by building, so that caused the first problem. And that's why, if the homeowner caused damage to the wall, they're responsible for fixing, but we have to figure out who the home owner or owners are. So I'll take, I'd be happy to pursue that. Well, can Mark, I'll talk to Mike.
Be able to find out some of the answers at the county clerk's office.
Okay.
That would probably be the first place to-
I'm just gonna talk to Mark.
To check any mark as a good beginning point.
So it's, it's multiple companies, all right?
No, there are, because there, this piece on the left, it is on the property of one oh one four one. Then there's the piece-
Now, read what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna call Sandpoint and, and Giovanna. I'm gonna call Sandpoint, they have commissioners, I'm gonna see how they, they give them certain duties, I'm gonna see how they do it, and I'll bring it back, okay?
Sandpoint has commissioners, trustees that are commissioners.
Yes.
Okay.
So we used to have that a long time ago.
So what does that mean, what does a commissioner do?
Well, the commissioners that we had years ago was commissioners of health and safety.
No, but I'm talking about trustee, at Sandpoint, a trustee is a commissioner.
Oh, the trustees as, no, that we never had before.
Well, I'll, I'll go up and talk to Liz.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go, and we'll find out how we work, because of how pretty semantics.
I don't know, but let's find out. They're our neighbors.
They wish they weren't, but-
Yeah, well, that's it.
What else?
Uh, you mentioned something.
I said something.
Yes.
You had, you sent out the annual financial report update.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
I'm going through it, I've got a bunch of questions, we don't need to drill into them tonight. I would ask Leslie, yeah, to talk to the account clerk, remember, we need to get these answered, so that maybe we can talk about them at the next work session.
Okay.
Be copy, everybody.
When is he going to be there to look at the, at the checks and everything for our next board meeting? When is he coming here?
Are we talking about, uh, the board? I called him today, and he's gonna call me back and tell me, he's probably coming either Friday or Monday. I don't feel as if it doesn't extra hour here with us.
Do you wanna copy? I'll give you one, so I have, it's on my left, so I'll give you one.
Tyler, hey, do you think you could do it too?
You can add that to the next agenda.
So he'll either be this Friday or Monday?
He was supposed to be here tonight, but it was canceled.
I'm sorry, yeah.
No, we said that-
Oh, yes, the, uh-
Right, 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 so we'll, I'll find out all of your things.
And you ordered financial, did they give you status on that, Leslie?
The finishing, the audit. He's gotta come back and finish. He still has some work to do on, on hours as well as the court.
The group, or court?
He does, he has to work the courts as well.
Okay, I, I, I had made that, I had given this, I think, to you, Leslie, right? See?
Uh-huh.
So I'm just gonna pass it out, but let's just go through and see what we can cross off, okay?
Is that the one that he emailed?
Yes.
I have it already, unless you change it, will you change it?
I don't know.
Just 'cause I may know someone, I hate when they give another copy, I don't know what I mean.
All right, then just give this to, just give this to Giovanna.
So you have yours, I have this? Yes.
I think this is the first one. So, for the lia-
Oh, give me a copy, please, use a different thing.
I, I'll take it. And you'd like one too?
Sure.
So I think the first one, um, we're hoping that we will just go through this list every, every work session, just quickly. So the liaison assignments, we're gonna talk to Sandpoint and see how they work it, okay?
We don't know what we're doing, right?
Then, uh, the work sessions, two sessions a month, we're having a problem with, maybe we'll bring it up next time.
I, I mean, I'm gonna favor that.
Yeah, I, I really like the idea of having two work sessions. Kevin, how do you feel about two work sessions?
Two work sessions?
A month.
A month, yeah.
We even could use it.
I, I, I think that we could start having it so we can conquer some of this list, and I think as we get rid of some of this list, I think- We won't need as many.
Well, I agree with-
So I think starting out at two-
Do you have another date you want?
I mean, if you guys, one wants to take out the calendar, we can look now.
I love that idea.
For December, we're talking about.
Well, December, we have already, so then it would be January.
Yeah, we have still some-
Oh, that's not your second one, it's December, right?
We act on better deal with December.
So we're saying we're gonna start with two, starting in January?
Yes. Two in January, so we, we now have the second Monday of every month, we didn't pass that officially, because Rita said, let's take a look at it after December. So is it okay if we do the second Monday of every month, and possibly the fourth Monday of every month?
That, I think, for now, it'll work, I mean, we have plenty of times since this January to, if something comes up.
Yeah, same here.
But I would say the eleventh and the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, the second, fourth Monday of every month. Unless we should be there.
And this is good, because then the residents will have that in their calendars, they'll know automatically, just like they know about our board meetings.
I really think that's a point.
Okay, so that's good.
And we'll still do-
Cross that off. Uh, update what we're gonna do with the, uh, with the bulkhead, and-
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, one more thing, seven PM, we said, right? Seven PM power, it's good, okay.
I would love it a little early.
Six thirty, we can do it.
Can we do it at six thirty?
I just, I just feel bad for some of the residents that have to, like, you know, get on the train.
It's a miracle I made it here at seven.
All right.
Okay, miracle.
Me, I get out at three o'clock, so the earlier the better, but I feel bad for the residents that have to work.
Who would we're working on?
Whoever's working on, Jim and I could have looked at that.
Twenty miles per hour, we have to stop posting that, we covered that, excuse me?
What, twenty miles per hour?
We're posting that, right?
One, one meeting, one meeting, what, January, we're gonna post it twenty mile an hour, correct?
We're gonna set the date for the public hearing in our January.
Public hearing, you do it in all twenty across the village?
You have to, what it is now, it's the same- It's the same speed limit across the village right now, so we have to change the entire village.
Get in touch with the county.
They, they moved up the county, I noticed.
Well, that's what, that's what, um, when I saw that thing, Leslie, that Jody, was it Jody Boswick that was doing it, that she had grant money left over for villages, for speed signs?
Okay, I went, I want to tell you about that, I followed up with the, with the town about the speed signs, and they told me that it was a grant from Jack Martin's office, and our Martin's-
Well, why don't we get it passed first, to see if we can get it, you know, before we worry about signs.
I have, I have to, what we, we do is, we can pass a resolution pending, um, county approval, let me have the passable.
I was just saying, if it's something that we have to get now, because it's a grant, I'd rather get the process, right, I'd rather get the process going to put our-
I think it's gonna take us a while to get that twenty mile-
No, 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 just to get us in there, so we don't lose it, we're ready.
I spoke to Jack about getting it, it was his grant, right, that was being, he had to do it through the municipality, I asked him, he's trying to get us that, he's also working with me to try to get the shed for the-
Now, how about the tax refund for the residents, we touched on that before.
Okay, you're talking about the, the two percent cap?
The hundred and eight thousand, yeah.
The two percent cap?
Yeah.
It's something that comes back automatically, uh, if, we are within the cap.
No, what I'm saying, I'm, and then I, I'm, I'm-
We're talking about the next one.
No, no, we're talking about that, well, don't we have to refund that to the residents?
It goes through our tax program, through Harris, we're working with Harris, and I'm trying to get some information from him.
Where's the rebate, I'm sorry.
I'm saying, the residents get the rebate of the hundred and eight thousand back.
I'm not sure it's the whole two percent, I don't know.
Well, that's what I think we should find out.
I'm gonna find out.
It's on a, it's on a balance.
It's a very small refund.
Well, it's a hundred and eight thousand, right?
We have to see if that's a refund.
I think those are two different numbers.
We'll still take it.
Yeah.
Small refund, we'll still, as a resident, I'll tell you, we'll still take it.
Yeah, yeah, but I'll, I'll let you know by the next meeting how that works.
How about any keys to both the law?
Okay, that, that's an issue, because you, you have the village records in the village hall, Leslie's the chief records officer.
But I had a key, I was a trustee briefly for three months. So the only keys are the mayor and the clerk.
Of the administration, sure. He's also case law manager.
And the highway, or-
Okay, this is case law.
No, I'm just, I'm gonna let you know who is the keys.
Well, I'm just saying, based on my experience, okay.
There's Sharon, Leslie, Nancy.
All right, I don't wanna, I don't wanna rock the democracy. The holdover, is we ever gonna get to that?
Hold it over.
Yeah, they're just gonna hold over, I just, yeah, we have too much going on.
Okay.
Um, wait, can I just back you up a second, 'cause I know you're working on that list, 'cause you had two separate things for the twenty mile speed limit, and the one-way Dunkin'.
Oh, right, the one-way.
Yeah.
How are we gonna do that? Do you remember the woman's name, do you have all the information for her, the keys of the lock?
Yes, the owner of the, uh-
Have you told her that we're trying to do that?
I would like you, you should really ask Ron, Ron's met with her a few times, so.
But what if it-
He's been dealing with her, so I'd suggest you give him a question.
My understanding from the police is that because that parking lot has more than four parking spots, it's considered a roadway, and that we can make it a one-way roadway.
But how do we do that, do we do it with a public hearing, the same thing, do we, can we do it with the-
How would, how would we make a street a one-way street? Whatever, I would imagine it could be the-
It's a public hearing.
So let's put that on the public hearing, as well as the twenty mile.
What, what, just as a-
Can we do that in tandem? Can we do it both together?
We can set a date on November nineteenth, if you like.
Yes.
For a public hearing on January, uh, on December.
We can put more, we can do that quickly?
We can set a date for the public hearing, but we would have to, we have to write the local law.
Right.
Making, I have to find out what it's called, the Dunkin' Donuts roadway. I can't think of what Dunkin'-
Well, whatever.
We already decided, we're gonna have a public hearing in January, right?
Oh, in January, okay, so in December, we'll set the date.
Why, because we didn't wanna do December public hearing, because it's the week before Christmas.
So we can set a date, the December meeting for a public hearing in January.
So Jim-
Yes, yes, oh.
Yeah, Mr. Thomas, so, what we're talking about, I haven't even taken notes, so what we're talking about is the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot. Establishing, establishing is that, what I've been told, led by, I believe, through discussions with both Nassau County and Port P D, is that it's a roadway, and the reason that the police on both sides were so convinced it was a roadway is because they can write someone a D W Y.
That's, I have a little experience in this area.
I know you do, which is why I'm asking.
Any, any parking lot that is accessible to public roadway, a police officer can issue a D W Y. A, a police officer, in fact, can issue a D W Y in your driveway.
Yeah.
If, if they see you, you get there or be about to drive in a car, it doesn't make it a public roadway, in fact, my observation of it is that it's private property, and we probably don't have the right, it would be a taking, constitutionally.
There's a question, that, it was presented to me that because it has four or more spaces, it becomes a roadway.
It's not a roadway in the traditional sense, I mean, I'll give you, I'll give you a more concrete answer on it.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
But it, but it's private property, we don't have to write the designated a one-way, I, I agree, it was, it was a terrible zoning variance, terrible, absolutely atrocious. And I think everyone agrees on that, but I'm, I'm not sure that we can, we can condemn the property and make it a roadway, if that's the question, I'll get, I'll get the answer.
Right, I don't think we wanna condemn, I think we just wanna make it a one-way.
Well, I mean, condemn, I mean, you're-
He doesn't know if we have the authority to do that.
No, what I'm saying is, when I, when you condemn, you're, you're doing, you're taking the purposes of the village, you're actually taking, you're taking the right.
But if the property owners, the property owners, because they own the property, what about if they say they wanted a one-way, how do they-
If you say one-way, there's parking spots there, so part of the zoning decision.
Well, it's just, it's just going in one way and coming out another way, so we're really not making, you know, like a normal road.
Can they put up sign, can they put up sign saying, enter here and exit here?
Yes.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's such a bad, bad idea, but you can't make it per se, one-way public roadway.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're wanting.
Well, that sounds to me best, right?
How hard is that, put up a sign saying, enter here and exit here, I mean, yeah.
The problem is that you, you have two different owners with two different, different advantages, right?
Ideas, right.
And the whole reason is a problem, is that the beer and soda guy.
It's ripping off, because either his neighbors have been there for a long, long time, and I think, you know, and it's a public safety issue.
Well, this is-
'Cause he's forcing people to back out.
Is there any, is there anything where they approve for a use permit for any period of years, or, or is it, was it just permanent?
Well, now we have to look it all up.
Yeah, we have to look it up, because a lot of times it's a use permit issue, five years, ten years for business.
Well, when, when we give out special use permits, when you give out special use permits, um, how long are they on?
You know, when I do it, when I sit on a C C button, I just want, it's usually five.
Because that's what they have, special use permits.
It's five years, but sometimes it's two years, sometimes you can leash on them for a year, I don't know if it's a use, or they just gave them the, the ability.
And they've been doing it, as she says, for like fifty years, it's probably become, like, automatic, right?
No, well- You know, I knew it's, it's an easement by, by a fish.
But I thought it also, now that I'm trying to remember this, 'cause it's coming to me, when Dunkin' Donuts first opened up, and they came to the board, I think they came to the board of trustees, I wasn't hearing yet, it was before me, they gave them a special use permit from the parking. So doesn't that, so then each-
If it's a special use, but is the owner that we're concerned about?
I'm so, wait.
Maybe, you said it right.
Right?
Is the owner that you're concerned about own the Dunkin' Donuts, is that, is-
Now, the seller family owns the buildings at, at the north end.
Okay.
From, from the edge of Port Beer and Soda to the other side.
And there, there are being told by Port Beer and Soda, who owns the south end, that they have to pay this like usurya's rate every month.
A usage charge.
To allow.
Right, it's terrible, it's terrible.
Right, it's ridiculous, and these are, the only concerned businesses have been there for decades, they're now, you know, it's not just Dunkin' Donuts, maybe, I don't know how long, fifteen, twenty years maybe, but some of those other businesses have been there for a lo- a lot longer, and now all of a sudden, you know, the new owner comes in and says, well, we're gonna build a wall, and we're gonna restrict your, your access. It's a new owner for Port Beer and Soda.
No, 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 they rent from the, the owner, I don't think it's a new owner, the people that are there are just renting.
New business owner, same landlord.
To my knowledge, and we can absolutely look at the issue, but to my knowledge, there's, there's a certain bone, a, a certain burden placed on the owner to litigate these things, it's, it's private property, I mean, there's safety issues we are concerned about.
Well, that's the only, but that's the only reason that I care about it, is because they're, they're having people back out, it's terrible.
Can't do that.
It's terrible, we can't allow it.
No, you can't.
Somebody's gonna get killed.
Terrible.
Like, literally, somebody's gonna get killed.
But nobody does, that's the whole point, the point is that everybody, and I get coffee there all the time, everybody goes straight across, you know, goes out to the light and makes a left or right.
Not all the time.
I've never seen anyone that's that-
But I, I have.
Really?
Kevin, should they have, if they're already twisted, they'll be able to do it.
All right, what do we move on?
Okay, you don't, you don't really, you don't like Dunkin' Donuts?
Take it south then.
You don't like Dunkin' Donuts?
No, I like them.
Well, you know, you need some effect already.
My, my suggestion, my suggestion is to put a sign, enter here, exit here, that's it, I mean, that's, I don't know what we need to do that.
But they're not cooperating.
I don't know if you'll, you'll stop charging her the usurya's.
Partner.
By the way, we get a new, we got new store owners there, you know the old, um, card shop that used to be there, and it's been vacant for about two or three years now? There's a new business going in, and it's those electronic cigarettes, that's what they're gonna be selling, and he's putting, huh?
At Pac? Pac two?
No, but they-
Well, I will tell you, he's also putting in, um, a billiards, uh, ball.
Do they have any discussion?
I know they, they need to- He's also gonna ruin himself out of business in a week.
He needs to go before they can, he's a nutball.
Oh, you know him.
The things that he's doing, he's gonna work out something.
He's a E M P guy, right?
Yeah, he's, he's gonna-
Sitting in the third store there, right?
That can happen.
Not opening-
And then they're gonna go, we have a coffee there and everything, that's what I said to him, you couldn't make enough money with just electronics.
It's gotta go zoning, and I, I honestly, I don't think it's a good one.
He's already in there, I don't think he's already in there.
Not with billiards, not with billiards.
No, not with billiards, but everything else.
Who will want me to copy files on this?
Okay, wait, wait, so setting up meeting with Kika, 'cause I, I stopped, so the meeting with Vision, we did.
We did, yeah.
Setting up meeting with Autumn and the county?
Yeah, that's gonna be done.
Okay.
Wait, we're gonna see him Monday or Friday?
We don't know yet, Leslie's gonna handle it.
All right.
W, let's put down home.
On home.
And then copying files, is this one thing you talked to us about?
Yep.
Did you find a line item in the budget?
Yep.
Should we have it?
Yep.
We don't need yours.
This is the digital, digital.
Do we have any work in there, Leslie?
We do.
Okay, fine, let's do it.
We do, we have two different lines, I'll show you where they are.
Why don't I just?
I have it somewhere, in this file. Yes, it is my cover.
And we're gonna put the video and audio recordings on the website, automatically?
Yeah, well, can we do that?
What?
Put the video and audio recordings on the website.
But it was legal, I don't care, as long as you show it, you don't have to head up.
So that would be Sharon, right?
We have video in there.
Right, the versions are edited, and you're, you're, they're edited, if we're gonna do them, I'd rather, if, if it's even a consideration, we would have to report them ourselves.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what we're saying.
Not from, okay.
Okay, it might be less money to do it, if it's companies that do it, look at North Castle.
We should look at Cablevision.
Many all do.
We should look at Cablevision, they have, they have a franchise fee for us, right?
Yep.
So, we can ask them, I spoke, we ran the trucks on it, we can ask them to do a public access channel, which they do for just about every other village, as part of their franchise agreement, where they, they put a camera up, and they record everything, and they, and they make it available.
I love that, I love that.
Rather than like a new Lexus channel, if you, if you look at the town of North Castle, if you look at the state, every meeting, you can access on the website, you just have the date, and you have the meeting.
That's why I love that.
So it's on the website.
I love that.
So from.
Recording, put it on the website.
And I'm pretty sure Great Nick Plaza, one of them, does the deal with Cablevision and they have cameras set up and they run.
Saying you'll have it available in perpetuity on the website. You can do it, you can do the cable and show it live if you want.
No, no, Cablevision actually has, you can go on.
Why don't you put it on the website? It makes it more one-stop shopping. Website has everything.
So who knows, do you know Cablevision? Who knows Cablevision enough to do that?
Why don't you take that?
I can do that.
You can make a call up?
Leslie, sure. No, Leslie. I'll do it. I'll do it.
Well, Sharon really does also. She does the website, so.
I'm looking into Nassau County police contracts. We tried to come up with.
Well, did Leslie mention that recall?
Yeah.
No, yeah, I heard, but you need, which thing, which thing, yes.
When did we say we were gonna have them come and talk at the December meeting?
If they can, otherwise we said that we're gonna wait and see if we can make some work session to give enough time to help them know.
At the end of the year was actually two thousand fifteen, it would be sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, change that to fifteen.
The capital budget we talked about, we played with Doug, raises resident files.
Okay.
We're doing great.
Actually, that's, that's what we talked about. That'll be what we talked about.
So Steve brought a copy of the bank statements. Do you do that now? We don't get that now. You want that? But you show us the.
I think that was something you wanted.
They'll show you.
You want that? Okay.
Yeah, and my question, one of them is, there's, the, this document lists a whole bunch of bank statements, but it doesn't tell us what they're for.
No.
One of them is three dollars and fifty.
A bank statement at the three dollars?
One of the accounts is three dollars.
Oh, okay.
But they're not labeled what they're for. So let's start with identifying what they're for and we can determine how many we need to look at.
Okay, so we'll talk.
Grant fund, oh yeah, how about grant fund deposit in separate account?
I think that's kinda hard because like the mortgage stock, we pay out and then they reimburse us.
I'm saying, you don't take the grants, you don't have to expand it?
Correct. So it doesn't work that, that would be, I don't know.
The grant is prepaid. No, the grant is prepaid, so that's, yeah.
Okay, so prepaid.
Prepaid. Code enforcement, Kareem's out here, he covered the hiring of a code enforcer, Madam Mayor says the trail is poor. Okay, it's, it's.
Did you get the, did you get the report?
Yeah, yeah, I did.
Do you have a copy of Michael's inspection report?
I must have. Yes, I do.
Please check off the bottom.
No, I, I, okay, my point that matters, it's a very, I saw having two trails stacked up.
But it's in compliance.
Okay, why can't we just ask Steve to undo it, uncouple it, take one down?
Okay, but you know, I can't speak, this is something you're gonna have to speak to.
Steve?
Steve or, yeah, I just want to provide you with that inspection report.
Okay, I have it here somewhere.
You sure?
Yeah, I believe it. I believe it. I love Steve.
Well, do you remember? Why did you publish the newsletter? Here you go. Just take that to you.
All right, here we go.
You know, the door's open there and that'd be, I could see some trips trying to climb up in there or something.
Very dangerous.
It wasn't even closed when we.
Is there a fence around it?
No, it's open. There was no closed bit. We walked right up to it.
Okay, but in the code book though, wait, wait, in the code book though, I thought we had something about storage containers, that they're only supposed to be there for a certain amount of time.
Good point.
So even though they're storage containers, I still think they only get them for a certain amount of time. Cause that would be like those pods. You can't have a resident have a pod in their driveway for months and months and months at a time. It's gotta be a timeframe. Even in industrial.
I think that would be in the code. I don't think we talk about that.
Well, I think it would be free to track.
Let me have a couple.
He has a code book. All right. I'm just going by Michael's inspection report.
We've got.
You had shared it to me.
Mike.
And if it isn't code, why can't we make a proposal, is that what we could do?
Didn't you get the question?
That's just like, just like, right, just just like when people started coming in with solar. I think he's been here since nineteen seventy-two. Right. Who knew?
That grant was been there since nineteen seventy-two.
I can't say that for sure, but I'm just saying that he's been here.
Well, I think really it's quite well taken. Trail is camping either and being indepth. That's what it is, it's seventy-two. Hey, commercial, uh, I think.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Are you reading inspection report?
I'm reading section one twelve, that's storage containers, storage of certain motor vehicles on that side.
Oh, can you do me a favor? When you speak to Mark also, can you ask him if he still has my code revisions?
New file?
What? I left him a message. I didn't hear from him. So I don't really know him that well, but if you wanna.
I don't at all.
Oh, you don't.
But I was just calling up.
He's got more, oh, I was gonna say something, but the money's on the table. What did I do? You got more hoods, Bob.
But what you do, we read the file, we need to talk.
It's not a big deal. I think Thompson will store.
It's one square sixteen.
And twelve sixteen, storage container.
Eighty-four hundred and twenty square feet.
There we go.
Hundred and twenty square feet.
It's only, it's only five.
It's only what?
Here, here, temporary storage containers. Definition, storage container means any container intended for the purpose of storing, keeping household goods or the person's property.
That's still like a pod.
That is intended to be filled, refilled, emptied while located outdoors on residential property and later removed from property.
Still residential.
Storage outside.
We're talking about industrial.
It shall be unmovable to any person from a corporation to place, keep or maintain any storage container on any residential property without superior.
Okay, that's residential.
Three, any person designing a permit to place or maintain a storage pod shall file an application that doesn't apply. A permit for storage pod doesn't apply. Section five, we got more here. A storage container may not be more than hundred and twenty feet, not more than eight feet high. It's not clear whether that's commercial or figured out. Storage containers should be kept at a setback from any side yard, minimum of five feet from the front yard, five, minimum five. There's a variance there. There's a, there's a setback there. Take a look at that. Building inspectors hereby authorize them to exercise a reasonable discretion to revoke any permit issued here under, doesn't seem to.
He's not.
That's what it is. I think it.
Let me read the last one. It's the length of time a storage container shall be permitted to remain shall be sixty days with up to one thirty day extension. Further extension shall be permitted only upon good cause demonstrated. It's, this looks, appears to be residential, the whole statute.
That's what I said.
I mean, you could pass a law on it.
This is what he's referring to. This is what the, and this is Michael from his tour. But you know what? That's hard for him to judge too, Michael, because that was, there's really nothing in the code for commercial.
Well, whatever it is, it was, I saw, and it's also dangerous. So I think we should get rid of it.
The thing is this with danger, it's on private property, so it is, it is a child trespass hazard, but the liability is on the owner of the property.
Understand. We don't want any, we don't want any action. We just ask Steve, I'll ask him, just take it off the top and move next door with it. It makes it a lot easier. That's all. We reduce one, I saw, we have any of those.
Okay, so let's move on. Commercial property, commercial vehicles on residential properties, we all know this. We discussed that at the last work meeting. We said it can't be done. They have to be hidden or behind.
They have to be screened.
That'd be screened, so.
That's not being done.
That we have to.
So you can issue code on it. We looked into that.
And let's all be vigilant about that. If anybody sees.
Well, can you, can we, can we come up with some sort of release? So, yeah, so if we were to find a place, a public, a public.
The problem is, is A, you don't have insurance coverage on it, B, you gotta maintain the parking lot, C, if anyone gets mugged, robbed, stolen from, it creates a lot of liability.
There's no way we can put it at your own risk?
There has to be because there are poppings all over New York, Queens.
What your own risk does is, it frees you from liability except in villages. So, you know, if there are potholes that we leave there.
Yeah, but they have, but we can, can we explicitly include all that stuff by saying, look, we're gonna provide a space? Because you can't park them on the residential street in front of your home. We're gonna provide a place that the village owns, you can park it. We're not gonna maintain it. We're not going to, you know, fix the pothole. We're not gonna put up lighting. You have to make sure you provide insurance on your own vehicles and anything happens to it is on you.
What, 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 you're gonna train the parking lot with no lighting at night?
What happens if it happens in the, in the park with no lighting at night? What's the difference?
Enjoy your own rest.
Yeah.
I think, I think.
Well, the park closes at ten o'clock, but you're right, but if you have.
So a lot of these companies hire in the park and they make parking spots. You know, they wanna park their car in their driveways cause it's for. Well, I know landscapers, they buy land out east, they drive all the way out east to park their trucks.
Well, I mean, that's a, I understand it's a.
Well, that's because they're in villages where they're.
They have, they park their driveways, it's great.
It would be real, but I saw.
You're right, it's an enforcement issue.
Right, but let's not forget who we are as a village, right? We have a lot of people who, you know, are working class people and they have their, their small business owners.
What if you have like.
So they're trying to come up with a way to.
We have a leaky truck. It's leaking gasoline to the ground and we have a super fun site. Who's responsible for that?
Right.
It's just creating liability, but you don't really want to do that.
I, I think, Kevin, to answer your question, if the homeowner makes an attempt to screen it, a couple of trees, whatever it is, I think it certainly, it doesn't, and their village have all of these commercial vehicles parked and driven. It's horrible. And the, the story from, from Kareem, he's right. He said, well, I'm not here early enough. So one, maybe one day a week, we change his hours. He comes in at seven and drives around right on Greenwood, of course, his breed from DeFranco. Been there, he runs his business out of his house and there's a truck there overnight, all day, Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, well, I think maybe.
Not right, not right.
Who is this?
Fertilizing, whatever they do, they spray.
DeFranco, the one towards Cambridge, not the.
Where else have we got?
Right behind you.
How can you learn one Saturday of a week? If you want to give extra money, give them overtime to work, but let him go around on a Saturday.
Do that and.
I don't think we've ever done it.
No, I have done. I have done.
Was that written up these ten, these commercial vehicles being parked in?
Well, we're not supposed to.
Without being screened.
There's a lot of them. People go around once. I mean, I'll go around.
No, no.
Well, today, that could happen now in their driveway.
No, I was saying that I do have them parked on Saturdays.
They create a super site, they're the predecessor.
I don't, I don't go around villages. Actually, I don't know a lot of those cases. Why did I catch?
Yeah.
They're not, you don't.
Makes, it's not good for the neighborhood.
The owner's responsible.
All right, where are we?
I will tell you, we had the same problems throughout the town of North Hempstead and there really are very few sites to be able to park its trucks.
Well, whatever it is, they took to the homeowner to direct the fire.
Concerned, and I had Nymer come out, who's our insurance company, and they suggested if we're gonna do this, and yes, it would have to be a contract, but it's gonna be more wear and tear on the, on the parking lot itself, so we have to.
I'm saying.
We should put in lights. You're saying we don't have, don't put in lights. We should, they said, the insurance company, put in cameras. So this is our insurance?
Whatever way to do it. I think Mr. Tom makes a very good point.
Right.
No, I agree. I just wanted to make sure we exhausted all the options before we say we can't do it.
We're not gonna do it.
I mean, if it's a problem that we can solve, it would be a problem. I think a lot of people in this village would appreciate having a problem.
Whoever, why don't you take it on their own and see what you're around.
Just again, just again, remember the worst case scenario. They park an oil truck there and it leaks.
Well, I would say no oil truck.
Twenty-five thousand gallons of oil into the, into the ground. I'm just saying, you gotta think, when you think about what could possibly go wrong, just think about the worst case scenario because as an attorney, I can tell you, it generally happens.
Nothing would happen in this world if we always think of the worst case, but anyhow.
Right, you gotta be reasonable.
So name a tree arborist from the vicinity to approve removal of trees. This is something I brought up at the meeting, but I shouldn't, it shouldn't be at a work meeting. I really think that we should just have a form that people, if they wanna remove a tree, they can come in, they can get the form and they can sit, we can have a list of all the arborists that they can have to tell them that their tree is dead. Then they can tell you who they want to, who would remove it, and then we could, you were worried about having, hiring arborists would cost more. We say if it's an approved arborist, we will not have a fee for that, we'll give it to.
You mean not coming to the board of trustees at all, just have.
No, what, what's the point?
I think you have to change the code if I'm not. No, you have to definitely change the code. Toner.
I think we're trying to streamline the meetings.
I mean, it just takes a lot of time and it's always pro forma. It's always a pro forma thing.
Well, it's pro forma because we've gone through the process and made sure it's been checked and then we bring it to the.
No reason for us to do it then.
But there, but there would, it's not always pro forma. There are times that people will come and they wanna take out twenty trees and you say no, you just can't.
Well, the only reason we say no is because the arborist says no, so I mean, it's not, we don't know.
I think the problem, part of the, there's two problems. One is it takes a lot of time to meet and it is pro forma. And two, right now, it's, it's such a game system, right? Because usually the arborist that they hire to tell them the tree is gonna go down, it's the person they hired to take the tree down. We should not allow that to happen, right? We should say, you have to, you can't, you have, you know, we should have a list of arborists that are arborists.
I just, I just tell you, I just tell you when John Delio was on the board, he was the one that used to approve when we were not.
Yes.
In three blocks.
And that's what we're missing.
So if we had, if we had, if we had an arborist.
Wait, private, he is arborist?
No.
It's a last.
Well, this is not one of those choices.
Oh, well, that's true.
We're not steering with anyone.
Well, doesn't have to be arborist when you last.
Of course.
I'm sure the county co-op has got arborists.
So then what happens when the owner says to the arborist, do you know a guy cut down the tree? Now you got, you got an arborist.
Yeah, we have to get.
And then the next guy is gonna say, oh, I got you last week.
So we give them a list of, we should.
I have a list here of, of arborists. We could take and give them the whole list or we can give them.
Arborists are tree services, though, let's be clear. They don't work as arborists. You know, they work as trees.
No, I have certified arborists and they're about seventy years within a twenty mile, within a twenty mile radius.
They won't certify. To be an arborist.
You have to use a certified arborist.
We could reach out to Mr. Right now.
But you just can't, the problem is that people are using the certified arborist. It's on the payroll of the tree service that they're using.
You know what's gonna happen, right? You run an arborist company. I'm gonna get you this week. You can say, look, when they come to me, I'm gonna recommend your company in New York. They're gonna be doing the same thing. This is our arborist.
Well, so we're settling out to some point, you know, at least what we don't have to do with meeting everybody.
All right, we're not gonna resolve it.
But I think this is a good idea.
We're just trying, we're just trying to streamline the meeting. I mean, sometimes we get here, we spend a lot of time with trees and Leslie gives a report, an in-depth report on the copying machine and all that. We're just trying to eliminate some of that.
Could you see them in, if we had them in advance, could you see them all and do one resolution that passes all the tree?
That's about it, right?
What do you wanna do? It would be three days before.
Unless you could, could we get the tree?
Well, that's how it used to work before because John Delio respected them. He, he would tell us in advance, he would email us and say, this tree shouldn't go. This one should just be for the center. And then when we got up to the board, we knew it's not the one we're doing. We didn't spend. He's a licensed landscaper. Exactly.
We gotta condense the meeting so we can have longer public conversations.
No, that's right. We have to, we have to be able to do, do things like this, you know, in front of the board.
I agree. But you do it in advance. Like you have four, you say, we have a resolution to pass all the, if somebody says no, then you have to do it one by one.
Okay, fine. But nobody, we're gonna try to pre-approve it before the meeting.
Okay. So what do we decide on that? Do we decide anything or is this gonna come up again?
I think it's a good, I think it's a good thing to try. You'll get it a day or two early.
So I'm gonna try.
Or do a single resolution.
Streamline resolution.
Single, single.
And then trust me to receive seventy-two hours prior to the meeting.
Is it possible then?
Yeah.
It's possible unless something comes in last week.
Something comes in last week.
They go to the next.
That's all. That's all. Why can't we wait for that?
Unless it's dangerous.
Well, danger is a different story.
Everybody's gonna say.
That should be done immediately whether or not. Okay, so Sands Point Road parking, I have to like.
Oh, that was me. We were contacted a couple of months ago for some of the residents because now that, um, rest have built some of the houses up on the hill or whatever they are, they're having problems with parking because they're only on, they're on one side of the road, but then during school hours, there's no par, I don't know, the signs are.
Aren't they on the hill, are the kids that get parking from Ashwood or something? I mean, I see them.
I'm joking. Yes, some of them.
Back to the top, cause they're like three stories. They come all the way down and there's property on Ashwood.
Right, some of them. But it's also, but there's also.
Some of them don't.
Exactly. And I think there's no parking during school hours like eight to four. So they can't even park on the street during the day. So they have to go to work or whatever, take the train and they have to leave their car home. They have to have it in the driveway if they have two or three cars. I mean, it's just been a big issue on Sands Point Road that the residents had sent us a letter. I don't know if you guys remember. They sent us a letter a couple of months ago asking if we could look into it. Just, I know it has.
What do you think the solution is?
I don't know. I'm asking everyone else to see if they, you know, I've been up that way. I, I see the, I see the issue.
Are these tenants or owners?
Both. They had a petition. It was actually a bunch of them that along the way, some were tenants and some were. And some of them were the landlords who actually contributed to whatever they were, you know, the petition they had.
Well, part of the problem is also that they've got permits to build these things without considering.
Exactly, exactly.
It was just, you know, well, they park in the street, but you can't park in the street because there's a school across the street.
And it's, I think it's no.
So they never should have been granted.
And it's a narrow road. It's a narrow road. It's, you can't park.
They don't.
How many cutouts are there? That's the planning board. If there's a variance.
But the cutouts is just access to a driveway, but it does not enough.
Just one more complaint on top of that.
Cause it's easy to be built on a cliff.
Right. But one more complaint, let's take the complaint a little further that the latter side, which is, it happens because I've done it, sorry. Um, when the school has an event, they park them, it's the code.
Oh, my God, they're always, Mar, we're always.
But how do you, how do you, how do you take it a parent who's going to see their kids, go see, you know, like, do we tell the police when?
All right, we had, why don't we, why don't we table that now?
No, we don't. I know, that's what, I mean, it's hard.
Let's move on.
Okay, I'm just letting, I'm just letting you know because I don't know if the residents are gonna send us another letter or come in and say, you know what? We sent you that letter months ago and nobody addressed it.
We don't have an answer.
What are we gonna do?
We don't have an answer for it.
I don't know, just letting everybody aware of it because I don't know if any of you.
Okay, so we put that on top of our list at the next work meeting so we can really take care of it. So I'm gonna put that on December, okay?
That's priority number one.
So now we go to sewer jetting.
Sewer jetting.
You're gonna have one more. We're just waiting for. Wait, wait, one, one, wait. And I will send it to you probably tomorrow if it comes in.
Oh.
Unless it's, we just sent it to Sharon. Two out of three.
This is the road.
No, I mean, no, this is to jet the sewer lines. Just waiting for the third.
Okay, we got that.
我们知道. We've already talked about the condition of the preserve. Overview of the.
Well, the condition of the preserve, are we gonna get a quote on getting rid of the concrete?
I thought that's what we did. I thought that's what we decided.
And that metal, that metal door's, is there a metal door? There's a metal door there as well.
I can pick it up. I almost picked it up myself.
You lift it up.
Yeah, I lifted it up.
Lift it up.
Okay, uh, equipment repairs and condition in good shape.
The condition of the preserve and trail leading to the dog's park. It's all overgrown there. It's a.
We're working on that actually. I was hoping to have that cleared up.
Okay, good.
You're talking about.
Now you're to the business section.
Before you go onto the business section, I just make one other thing that I didn't see on here, was the pruning of the double strip trees. Now, I don't know if anybody else noticed, those, what's the name of that truck? Escondido? Escondido?
Yeah.
Did you see how, did you see how many are in Matterheim right now? Is that LIPA?
Yes.
LIPA contract.
PSGG, they sent every homeowner a letter saying that we will be coming by the last two weeks of October.
I have to tell you that they're chopping those trees apart.
They are.
Well, you know what though? I've noticed on my street because I had some of my neighbors complain and then I noticed it even in the tree in front of my own house. There's a whole bunch of dead limbs that are hanging above the wires that they didn't trim.
Right.
Oh, great.
They're going to come down.
Yep.
You know, like they haven't, they haven't had a leaf on them in years, yet they left them. I actually called the guy and said, you know why?
Yeah, I already talked to them and they said because they're only responsible for the wires. That's all the PSGG is paying them for. And I, because I had some of the trees, the leaves are overhanging still. When you drive, they're almost hitting near your car as you go by.
No, but if they're above the wires, they're going to fall on the wires.
Their dead branches above the wires are going to come down sooner or later. And it's going to come down like when they lose need to in the middle of a snowstorm or something.
That's what my other question was because I didn't know where they were and I stopped and asked them because I.
I didn't get a letter in the village. I guess homeowners did.
Homeowners.
They've been all over the village for the last week.
Some guy named Chris.
It was, it was actually, I don't believe during the day, I go home at night.
And that's why I called them because if they have any questions, call them.
Right, the only other thing is, I mean, not to get off topic, was also the double strip pruning. That, you know, I was walking my dog the other night and the tree like literally hit me in the head. It was so dark.
So who's responsible for that?
I thought the double strip, I thought.
The homeowner was responsible.
I thought that we had sent out the DPW right before the winter time and trimmed all the double strip trees. I remember Billy doing it, ask Billy because he did mine.
I think that, no, I, I think that was the, any trees that were obstructing like stop signs or signage.
Well, he did our whole block and I remember him, they started on Ashwood and they went down all the blocks. They started down all the blocks because a lot of those trees that village planted, even though it was the homeowner's responsibility to take care of them because mine died.
Well, it was their responsibility to take care of them and it must be their responsibility.
But I thought, I thought we had agreed though years ago that the DPW was going to go around and just trim those branches for the homeowners that don't have the equipment or not. They're little branches, they're not those big, thick, huge.
They're a good thought.
Right.
Go down.
I'll talk to Billy.
Ask Billy because I know he did it up and down my block.
I'll do that.
Okay, Billy's going to do that, let's go on.
I just want to ask him because it's getting, it's getting bad. When you walk down, especially when it's dark out, the tree branch can hit you right in the head. You don't even know.
They're not going to hire somebody to cut.
That one little branch.
Okay.
Okay, Lucretia Steele has, must have some files.
She's right there.
She sent, she sent everything to Leslie on the business.
Okay, I don't have any.
Because she started the whole thing from scratch, so it's just all her notes that she.
She's right there.
I thought she left.
I thought she left too.
I thought she left.
I'm being. I mean, I'm just re-inventing the wheel. But if I, I mean, I was.
Well, yes, you just come back in.
Okay, let's continue and then I'll try to.
Okay, I'm just going to put Leslie.
But you don't have a file, Lucretia's right here, why don't we just ask her? She's right here, I can see it right there. That's Lucretia Steele.
My belly insurance for the parking lot.
I'm ignored. She's going right now.
I'm not reading the current.
This repair bill, bulletin board.
Since when?
Never.
Okay.
Now Rita, I remember the very first meeting and Giovanna, the very first meeting that I paid to practically, maybe it was October.
First meeting that you sat with trustee, the first meeting you ever came to the village?
Probably one of the same.
No, practically not, I went to one.
Yeah, one.
I'm saying, no, I don't know when you're like, is.
The first one as a trustee. One as a trustee, okay. One of the first things we did is we all approved of the bulletin boards. We were going to buy two bulletin boards and see how they worked and how nice they were.
Okay, I'll tell you what, what happened with.
The problem with the bulletin boards.
I'm going to ask you if you can say that, go ahead.
Right, some of them had to have like a lock and key. Then the resident, and the residents couldn't put their garage sale signs because you know the NOS was putting them on the telephones. So we were trying to find one that had like a cork board on one side and a lock and key.
That sounds good, that sounds good.
Yeah, we can't find one.
Really?
Yeah, that's, we're having.
Granger?
What?
Granger?
No, I think she, I think she went to Granger and now they have to be like custom built.
Okay, let me look those up.
So now we would have to go to like a custom build and find out.
Dude, actually, I would have wanted to build those.
Yes, they built them themselves.
Built it prior to two thousand twelve.
Yes, because they were in such a disarray. Yeah, but then they fix them, right, then they paint them up. Right, then they paint and fix it because people could slip their garage sale signs underneath the plexiglass and stuff. That's the problem. You don't want anybody when you put a public notice on to be able to rip it out.
Yeah, but right now it's.
Right now you do that.
I understand that.
It looks horrible.
I know, I, I agree.
That's one thing, we better come up with something.
We have to find a place and we have to order them from like custom made.
Can we ask, I mean, Sharon does a lot of looking up grants. Can we ask her if she can find a grant for this?
I think we should, we should do it too. Find a grant if possible.
Well, I highly doubt it.
But I think they should come down to you, but they're really nice.
All right, so let's get, let's get quotes on, we have to get custom made ones.
Okay, but I'll look too, I'll look at other.
You line, no, there's like a Granger.
Okay, let me just write these names down.
I have, oh, I have their catalog each because I used to be in that business. And they're just through.
Their best customer in the park.
Yeah.
Excuse me, we just wanted, may I? May I just wanted to ask, Ms. Steele? Because she has the business file.
Well, I know.
Do you have the business file?
I thought I'm not supposed to speak to you, Mr. Steele.
Oh, that's very cute. We're asking you if you have the business file.
I can't get in all my records too.
I will look for them tomorrow, I just.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, vacant store windows, let's go. Can, is that, is that, do we have anything in the codes about vacant store windows? So here's something else that we have to, let's, let's.
Well, no, there's something in the code about not vacant store windows, but actually store windows. It has to be.
Why don't we look it up?
You can't cover the entire window, it's in there. You can't cover the, I know because John Delio, I remember did a lot of research on this because he was very upset with when the. Yeah, when the dry cleaner first opened up, he had like papers all over the windows and everything. And I remember there was something in the code book, he looked it up. Because you only can have like a certain.
I remember you saying.
Yes, it was.
So why don't we, why don't we have Kareem somehow or another, all the store windows that are open where you look in and you see all the wires and garbage and everything? Let's see if they can, if they can get the owners to put something in.
I'll read the code with respect, but I don't see anything in it and I don't think it's.
But they, I guess, they were saying they should be allowed to have, look into a store window and see, and see, you know, wires and crap all over.
Will the store owners do anything voluntarily?
I spoke to one and not, not to mention by name, but he said.
What, what do you suggest?
I don't know.
What if the one person.
Chris doesn't care.
Take things less, right?
How do you say you two?
I think it's a turge.
Rain. Rain garden?
Okay, this is my, this is my little thing that I put in bus shelters. Since I thought I was going to be getting the business section, but you know, if we were liaisons and maybe I'm not going to get that now. But nevertheless, I've already started working on it and I've already been talking to Delia about it and a couple of other people. I drive from Dunes Lane to the shopping center at least once a day, sometimes twice a day. And it's snowing and it's raining and it's slowing and all these poor people are standing out there in the cold. So I think we should try to offer them if we can some kind of a shelter while they're waiting for the bus.
Like the ones they put on a, on a landmark, I think there's one?
Yeah.
Well, that's too big. I don't think we're going to be able to put.
No, but I'm just saying.
It's a concept.
Exactly, that's the concept.
Oh, that Port North did, but Port North got that money. She got that money for the.
For grants.
For the state.
Delia already told me she's giving me the money, so we've already getting it. So basically what I have to do now is I found some shelters that take very little space because if you load, notice some very little space.
And how many are going to put?
Well, we have, what, three bus stops on Matterheim Boulevard?
Probably more than that.
Four.
On both sides?
No, no, no. Because when they're coming this way, they're going home. It's going towards the, it's going towards the.
Five?
Five on Matterheim.
There five?
Beach.
Oh, right, there's a beach too.
Yeah.
Oh, goes down to Orchard.
Right, goes all the way around.
Turn around, the corner of Orchard.
Well, I know they turn around, but is there a bus stop there? I thought the last bus stop was.
There's five bus stops.
Just before return.
Okay, so five.
And there's one at the corner.
I told her four, but anyway, okay, five. All right, so I just want you to know that I, and I want to know if the board agrees with me that we should have built bus shelters or whether they just felt the action pursue.
Budget.
Of course.
One in that and in between two.
All right, we got that, let's go.
Okay, they're okay with it?
Everybody's good.
Okay.
I don't think we need five either.
I don't either.
But let's just, let's just see where they placement, right? Let's see the placement costs first.
Five would be making.
And see what they look like too.
Yeah, we can't have big.
I have pictures, but I didn't bring them with me, but some of them are really beautiful. Okay, meet with vision, we've already talked about that.
Yes.
Go ahead. Oh, we were donated a house at twenty-eight P Quat, is that correct?
No.
No.
So what house were we donated?
That was, we were actually looking into Pan Am, wanted to, they were looking into twenty-eight P Quat as possibly using it for their museum. And we were kind of looking to something at the preserve. It never worked.
But didn't somebody donate a house to them?
No, this is what the story was. There's somebody that owns a small house, it's at twenty-eight P Quat. They're before the VZA to put up a new house. It's a tiny little cottage. So the people at Pan Am were looking in this area because their first transatlantic flight took off right from here. So, so exactly, so we thought, and they came out, they had several meetings. They changed their plans, they don't want to use it, it's too small, period.
How much money was Pan Am looking to put into this? Because I'll tell you where they should build something. Morgan Dock. Because Morgan Dock looks over where the plane actually took off.
Correct, and we were talking about that with them too. We took them all over. The bottom line is for some reason.
Maybe they'll buy Bill's Harbor Inn.
Yeah. I thought, I thought, I thought somebody bought that and the plans were submitted.
I wish somebody would knock that down.
The plans were submitted.
I had, I had somebody ask me, who would buy it? And I gave, I'm not working as a broker. And she took the person who said he wanted to buy that and they want two hundred twenty for it. So it was a problem.
Okay.
Can the village do anything to make them take down what's there now?
What, Bill?
Bill's Harbor Inn?
Yeah.
They can condemn it.
Well, Michael, Michael has that.
We're just going to clean it up right now, we have some OTOs. They have to go to court.
Wait a second, I'm confused on that.
The only piece of property in the fire department has been, everybody's been told you don't go near it.
Right.
If it's on fire, let it burn.
But I thought, I thought the owners put plans in to reconstruct it and build a volcan and the whole line.
There's something going on with it.
It was in the news letter, I said it did.
The attorney for the owner of the property, we told them to clean up around it. This is my source.
How was he saying?
I told them they have to go to court. They've been dragging it out and then Nancy put it to my attention. I said, you're going to have to go to court and appear on it.
So then they never had plans in the village?
But it was a news.
There's something, you know, going on a sale or something, they're in the middle of something.
A news letter.
They wouldn't give you.
It was in litigation or something.
They're about to either sell it or apply for a plan or something, something. But I said, it's going on too long, you have to come to court.
A camera for the preserve, again, this is something that we had online for a long, long time. Can we put this on the next December? Let's start with things for December and do some work.
I have information for you.
Right, I was going to say, I was hoping we were going to get some kind of grant money or something on that.
Why don't we take this list and pick ten items out of it for the next work session?
The lighting and the camera was supposed to be like a dual, dual.
And working with the synagogue across the street.
Right, and Lady Panama over there, right.
Exactly, so I will give you that. I'll scan that and send that to you.
I don't know what grant senior volunteer training is.
That's Kevin's.
Okay, so there's a program called Senior Corps. And they, actually a program called R S V P, which trains seniors who are interested in volunteerism on how to like be volunteers. So the grant money for twenty fifteen is already gone. However, I'm trying to backdoor a way in through New York State. And I've been playing telephone tag with a woman named Jessica Vasquez, who's in the Corporation for National Community Service, New York State office.
What are we training them to volunteer for?
Let's say that we wanted to, to run fundraisers, you know, and senior volunteers.
I thought.
It's just an example.
No, I know, I'm just saying, if that was one of the things, I thought we weren't allowed, we weren't.
Okay, so we want to have seniors participate in, say, a welfare check program for elderly residents.
Okay.
You know, how to get organized, how to keep track of seniors, how to properly account for it, how to measure the effectiveness of the program, all of those things so that you continually get more money.
Okay.
You know, like if they're going to give you money, it's an ongoing thing, if not at one time. So you have to have metrics and results. So the idea is that instead of creating a new administrative burden on the area, you're trying to help by volunteers, you train the senior volunteers to handle the administrative burden along with it. So your first volunteer is the person who runs the volunteer program.
Sounds good theory.